...authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for the city council to approve the budget, providing for a savings provision, and providing for scrivenor errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
So, based on the change of the millage, I presented the overall budget, but at the next council meeting, second public hearing on September the 19th with the city manager, we will make the necessary list, which will show the deducts to the budget that we previously shared with you at all the other budget workshops.
Is there some way we can get that before the 19th?
I'll be honest with you, we will be in storm mode until Tuesday or Wednesday. If we get you a package out by Friday, I'll be very happy.
Please, fine. Yeah, sorry. Wasn't thinking.
That's okay. Thank you, ma'am.
But if I have free time in the EOC this weekend, I will be more than happy to work on it. Occupy my time.
Yes.
Okay, the motion, do you have that?
Yes, sir, it's in front of you, so I've placed the motion that would need to be read into the record for the term requirement.
And I will say, if you will, please counsel, at this 19th meeting, you will read into motion the percent of recommended millage rate of 9.160 increase overall back. You'll read all of that information into your motion so that it's noted for the public as to what was decided at this meeting. Okay? So, thank you.
Right now, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2017-127 tentative budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. I defer to my vice mayor.
I move to approve Resolution 2017-127 tentative budget for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Second.
Second. Thank you. So, I'm just going to go ahead.
May I have one moment?
Oh, yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to.
I almost forgot you.
That's okay. Again, we will go back and balance to the 63 million, 268, 308. We will adjust items to the general fund. We will not adjust items to the discretionary funds or other funds, as in the sidewalks, which are part of discretionary funding. We'll adjust projects and so forth and take a hard look at that, and then we'll just present to you the outcome of that. Again, those numbers may reflect adjustments, not saying that in the new year, at mid-year, that if we do have monies that we carry into the new year, that you could not reallocate those funds to be used for some of those projects. And I will look at, based on priority and what was presented to us during those budget workshops, if that's counsel. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from counsel?
Yes, thank you. Well, one of the things that I want to make sure that we talk about is that we mentioned it before, that we make sure that we're all in agreement, if that's what we want to do, to direct our city manager to work with our broker at Barfield and within the next seven or 10 days, maybe, to work on.
And storm bill.
Yeah, and.
I'm okay with two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, next couple of weeks. That work with at Barfield on the property on 11th to see about a price and offer to bring back to council, using whatever funding sources, of course, they actually have in the CIP.
Yes.
That you, your FA, your attorney, your team decides to bring back, of course, which then, at that point, would be something that we talked about. So, I just want to make sure that that's still.
And then that would be, from a confidential perspective, as a negotiation, and we'll work through our legal and Barfield to make sure that happens. And then, I believe we can meet with them individually to discuss an agreement on that dollar amount before it's presented in the public. Is that correct? City Attorney?
And I would not want us to say, oh, yeah, you know, you guys figured out, you're smart enough and, you know.
And we'll work with the broker, and of course, I cannot pull you, so those will have to be meetings that we individually have, and then, again, bring back through the city attorney, but those will be confidential records requests until it's complete.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to address our revised budget now? Seeing none, back to the council. No more comments. Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Hey, just one, not just one, real quick, we'll go to the next item. The people, first time here to our meetings and for a budget thing, is going through these two items is a little different than our regular resolutions that we normally go through on a weekly basis. They usually go a little bit quicker. This requires a little bit different procedure for the, those two items, the millage and the budget, a very set procedure by the state on our form of statute. So, I'm thankful all for bearing with us through those two items. And we have another item here, K D, approval of Resolution number 2017-115, the rate, the electric rate increase. And Ms. Koffler, we have the title read.
Resolution number 2017-115, a resolution of City of Mountdora, Florida, approving adjustments to the electric rates for the City of Mountdora, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, scrivenor errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. And actually, I'd like to ask Charles Rebels to come up to the podium for just a moment, and we'll be quick about this, but we want to acknowledge the fact that we do have a 4% increase across the board on the electric base rates, as well as we have some adjustments to the cost of electricity, and I'd like to open the door to that, to him to explain that to you.
Basically, the base rates were adjusted two years ago with the 4% base rate increase. 60% electric budget is a pass-through of wholesale power costs to Duke Energy, so basically, we're only managing 40% of it. So, basically, we're talking about increasing that 40% by 4%. The 4%, that's two years, is roughly 2% a year. Some of that is inflation, just higher costs for equipment and things like that. Another part of it is funding a deputy manager position, so that you have two people here in case I get hit by a truck, this succession planning. I think it's a really good idea to have two people in the electric utility, just for coverage, like in hurricanes and so forth. So, it's a 4% base rate increase, and that generates the money for the increased O and M costs and personnel costs. The rest of the increase, fuel costs are going up, at least as of a month ago, they're going up. That's a pass-through, so the power cost charge, which is where the customers pay for the power costs, again, it's a pass-through, there's no profit, that's going up roughly 3.5%. So, you put the two together, and the average bill goes up about 3.7%.
And we have supplied to you some typical electric bill comparisons, just giving you an idea. On page 38, we've also provided on page 39, again, some information from the state perspective. I think Mr. Rebels mentioned earlier, this, these are data that he's presented with often, you know, I don't, I think it's quarterly or so forth, so we provided that information to you, and we'll provide that to you as a mid-year update at the next time, and it's on the website for anyone who'd like to review it and look at it and ask questions at the city.
And I'd just like to point out on this page with the bars on it, even with the 4% increase, we're going to be less expensive than Duke or Seco.
Have a motion for approval?
I move approval of 2017-115.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to council. Any more? Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Approval of Resolution number 2017-118, video camera for parks. And Ms. Koffler, we have the title read, please.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2017-118, a resolution of City of Mountdora, Florida, to approve the purchase of video camera systems for city parks through a PDA contract, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, providing for scrivenor errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a handout I'd like to present to you. There are some extras, you can leave them at the end of the table, and if the public would like to have those, they're made available. Excuse me, this information was requested, I think, by some member, Tillot asked, apologized at the last meeting, and Public Safety Director O'Grady presented this information tonight so that you can see the need, the calls from each of these parks. In response, as he has provided you there, and we have calls range from noise disturbance, suspicious person, car burglary, traffic stops, et cetera, so we provide that information to you. So, city staff is requesting that you approve the purchase of the video camera systems at our various parks, and I think just Public Safety is probably enough said in this respect, but we would be glad to answer any questions, and we would like to see council approve this item. Thank you.
Have a motion for approval?
Move to approve. Second.
And any comments from council on this? Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I have a question about just the workings of the cameras.
John?
John, would you like to come up and talk about the workings of the cameras, please, ma'am?
Not working on it.
What's your, John, the Shamen IT manager, what is the question?
My question's very simple. In my previous life, we've worked with a lot of cameras, covert surveillances and the like, and cameras on the side of the buildings, and I know if I'm older than dirt right now, I've been gone for 12 years, you know, 12 years retired from that, but at night or at dusk, how is the clarity on these cameras? Are we seeing figures, or can we identify people?
Okay, let me call up Brian Remington from Smart Watch, the vendor that we're going to use, and he can give us some, we'll answer that with the technical.
Hi, I'm Brian Remington with Smart Watch Security. The visibility is very good. In the cases of low light situations, all the cameras have IR illumination built into them, so they eliminate, or they emit their own light, which is invisible to the human eye.
Okay. And individual can be identified?
That all depends, obviously.
No, I mean, not you're looking at his back. They say a face, can that face be identified from the cameras?
We're using high-resolution cameras that are IP-based, so they, and they're a very good quality camera, and as Chief O'Grady could attest, or John could attest, that we use very good quality equipment that is going to give you the best possible view of an individual that you could get. It's not like the old days with analog cameras.
Except, I've been removed for over a decade.
Think high-definition.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Second. Thank you.
No, actually, my question, I think, is probably more for Chief O'Grady. So, it's, this handout here, and by the way, thank you for this, this makes, helps solidify this in my mind, this shows 106 calls from Palm Island, but the camera system is going to be attached at the park's office parking lot at the end of Tremaine, which is that, the boat, the boat trailer type of thing. So, do those two areas equate to each other, or are we having calls from people who are like actually out on the Palm Island boardwalk and calling? Because I want to make sure that the camp, I don't really see a need for a camera at this parking lot that's really only used in the daytime when people have their boat trailers there, unless you're getting calls from people at Palm Island and who are out on that boardwalk, although that's not open at night either.
Right, so John O'Grady, Public Safety Director, that's going to be mainly, it's the Palm Island area, so I'm going to say it's mainly without going case by case, it's going to be mainly the parking lot, which was identified because of car burglaries, things of that sort happening there.
Okay, fine.
And we may find that we need to add a camera at the entrance, because remember, you agreed a few months ago that we can put in the closure doors there as soon as we have the funding, that they automatically close, and we don't send someone out there to lock that gate, so there may be a need to have a camera at a future time there, but it's not part of this package.
Chief, just speaking for myself, I'm not smart enough to understand where cameras should go, and so, if you recommend they go in a certain spot, I think that's more of a management decision that needs to be made and not a policy decision to council, but I understand the question very well, and I may have the same question, I'm going to trust your judgment.
I'm just going to make a comment, same as yours, but in a totally different way, that I don't feel that when we, when we're talking security in a city like that, you know, security issues, work cameras, and it's true, you talk about work cameras being placed, if there's a need to have a camera in a park, that's good for me, basically what you're saying, that's good enough for me. Worst place is a security issue, and we don't need to reveal to the public where the cameras are being placed.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments from council? Seeing, anybody from the public wish to address? Mr. Gonzalez, three minutes, state your name and address, please.
This is a question, basically.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Frank Gonzalez, 8237 Bridgeport Bay Circle, Lake Simondora. Are there any stats that we have that relate to Lake Simondora as part of Mandora? Because we have a, an RV lot that seems to be vandalized on a regular basis, and maybe we need a camera somewhere in that area.
Sir, I believe.
So, are there any stats that would justify putting a camera?
That's in your private area, and I would like to please.
I'm saying, coming in, into the community.
I can answer maybe real quick, too. Coming into the areas is used, is, I believe that's used as our Lake County area, coming into our area. Okay, so that's, that's another issue there, so, and again, I understand your concern, but that's going to be something that you have to take up with the management of the Lake Simondora for the, for the camera issues there, and I know our police, police have worked in conjunction, again, with our, with the management over there on different issues, and you can maybe address that.
So, I'll take the moment to say I'm a big proponent of cameras. In my past life, I dealt with them in my past agency, and once we get over the Big Brother thing, because everybody has a camera on their boat anyway, it's a good thing. So, working with private, we have worked with Lake Simondora on several issues that they've had out there over the past couple of years, and we've partnered with them, where we've used some of our cameras, just to answer your question, and their cameras, but I am more than open to working with private communities on a private-public partnership to put cameras out there, so to anybody out there in a private community, we'd love to work with you.
I think you just gave Mr. Gonzalez another project.
Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
Thank you. Chief? Just to, I could ask you to come up one more time, or please, you know, come up at the podium, listen to what I have to say.
I have a question now.
I didn't come up right. I want to compliment the police department, Chief O'Grady, and all of the staff, because the country of Mandora has private cameras, but we have funded them ourselves as an HOA, because even though it's public streets, it's our private HOA that is concerned, and we wouldn't expect the taxpayers to help fund an HOA's private entity. But the cameras that we do have at the entrance work well, I want to just share with you, Mr. Gonzalez and others, work well, and the police department does have a great public-private partnership with the country of Mandora in this very area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we had public, we had the, back here to council, any other council comments? And Mr. Johnson, we have the roll call vote, please.
Yes. Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Approval of Resolution number 2017-120, waste management rate increase, and Ms. Koffler, we have the title read.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2017-120, a resolution of City Council of City of Mountdora, Florida, providing authorization for sanitation rate increase based on the consumer price index CPI and pursuant to the existing waste management contracts, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for delegation and administrative authority to the city manager for implementation, and providing for scrivenor errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Ms. Hayes?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, council members. First of all, I'd like to mention that this waste management increase for our solid waste, June 2013 was the last time that we entered a contract with waste management to provide twice-a-week solid waste removal. Our current rates, I will just point out, the current residential rates will propose to increase from $20.87 to $21.26 per month, or 39 cents, represents a 1.87% increase overall. The year city charges for sanitation services was computed at a 1.65 per customer, which covers the operating cost of the fund. As you're aware, we made some adjustments to this fund, we've increased the service to the fund in the sense of city employee service and making sure that all the processes by which this fund needs to operate on the operation side is adhered to, and we had position last year that was added, but was not full-time until this year coming up, so some of the cost of this fund increase actually takes care of those processes or those employees.
Have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Stone?
So, you said we have an FGE coming in for this?
We already had it last year, you funded it in last year's budget, we just didn't fund it for an entire year, because again, you looked at it as a partial year, so that this one is finalizing for the entire year this year.
So, is this like, I'm sorry. So, is this like a contract, a contract manager? Because this is a contracted service.
It is, yes. I don't recall the exact title, Mr. Shepherd might be able to help on the title, only because he was involved in it last year.
This is administrative interface type of position?
Yeah, this, the position they have there are there to help waste management, we're the focal point. They call us, we'll handle it. We also go out, we make sure that the rightaways are clean and other things like that. The main increase will be coming from the contract that we do have, it's based on CIP from a specific index that they use each year, it has to go up.
And if you recall, the budget process, we didn't have enough money in the current fund balance to even take care of the future CIP. There were a couple of issues we talked about through the process this year.
And I'm assuming that, I think, seem to remember that we talked about maybe looking at the pros and cons of sort of a, of going to a once-a-week service versus twice-a-week for.
And we'll bring that.
That's something to consider.
Right, we'll bring that to you. Our current provider is here in the audience, and we would talk that through a work session, so with waste management, so we would have to look at a contract change when we make that, and we would present to you the dollar, either savings or costs, as well as the contract, and we would look at that as a future work session, but they are here for that, for the purpose of being able to answer the question.
And one final question, is this a one-year contract or a three-year contract?
I think it ends in 2020, is it?
It does, it was, we're into the third of the process.
Okay.
Third year, third year of the process.
It was actually a seven-year contract, so it was the fourth year.
Okay, fourth year of the process.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm just.
Mr. Olson? So, my understanding is this is going to increase load rates by 35 cents per month? Is that per month?
39 cents per month, yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I need, huh? Thank you.
Mr. Slavy, did I see you?
Yeah, I was just thinking about that, I think Councilman Hope had mentioned earlier about the ability to manage one's life and that, and you had mentioned, this is definitely something that we want to look at them, whatever survey, I mean, of course, you guys are pretty good at this, to know what things, you know, help us, help you, help our citizens kind of thing, whatever it is, that would be great.
Just something we can do over the next, over the course of this year or two, maybe put out some surveys and some of our flyers and different things with the people to get an idea, the feeling of the citizens all may be going to the once-a-week, and maybe just some areas of the cities that maybe wouldn't like to go to it, and others, and that could be a reduction overall to the, you know, for the city's rate, and that's the only way we're really going to get that, because all the other services, part of that are going up, and the only, the only thing we have is to reduce the amount of pickups that we have, and that's about the only way we're going to get savings on that side.
A comment from the mayor? If you think about it, I'm not getting to the 39 cents, but, because it's really the old saying, great bang for the buck type thing, think about if we as individuals, our homes, our residences in Mandora, or any city for that matter, had to deal with our waste individually, what kind of a wonderful service is provided to have this? We just bring it out to the curb, they pick it up, we don't have to think about it. For the value of the dollar we spend as homemakers, as residents, or homemakers for that matter, for the value we get for that small payment is really marvelous, and it's, of course, it's spread over a great, a great period, so I don't have any problem, I don't think anybody should have a problem with making sure that our waste management is adequately dealt with, we are really treated very nicely, I think.
We have two representatives here from two different companies, and waste companies, and it'll be interesting to know in about a month from now what the waste industry is going through in Texas as of right now, and the impact on the, everything that's going on down there with that whole industry and with, and how they're going to deal, and how all that trash is going to be dealt with in Texas, and hopefully not in that area. But anyway, I appreciate that, so anybody, anybody from the public wish to address this issue?
Seeing none, anybody from council, any other comments from council? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Approval of Resolution number 2017-123 to DW 351450, drinking water construction loan agreement. And Ms. Koffler, could we have the resolution read?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2017-123, a resolution of City of Mountdora, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection Drinking Water State Evolving Loan Fund Construction Loan Agreement, number DW 351450, providing for legislative administrative findings, providing for delegation of implementing actions to the city manager, and providing for scrivenor errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, council, mayor. We've talked about this several times throughout the year, these are the SRF loans, asking the mayor to authorize the signature of the SRF loan. I'll just remind the council that the loan is in the amount of 1.5 million and some change, is at an interest rate of 1.21%. Each loan payment will be approximately $43,000, and they're made typically October 15th and April 15th based on the amortization schedule, and again, as we go through the process, this is also one of those, if in the future we have to have change orders, Mr. Peters has brought to you the fact that we'll bring those to you after we've already done the work, and I would assign for those originally, so I just want to remind the council we have had those conversations in the past.
Have a motion for approval?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Thank you. Comments? Anybody else, council? Anybody from the public wish to address? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Approval of Resolution number 2017-128, interlocal agreement with Lake County for economic development. And Ms. Koffler, could we have the title read, please?
Resolution number 2017-132, a resolution of City of Mountdora, Florida, to approve an interlocal agreement with Lake County for funding economic consulting services through an amended work order with Levy Consulting LLC to provide professional consulting services for the Wolf Ranch Innovative District, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract in accordance with sound procurement practices and principles, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, and providing for scrivenor errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
What was the number of the resolution read?
Did I read the right?
I, it could be 128.
128.
128, what was you?
132.
132?
Yes, 132 was in the original packet.
It was the same, same thing other than, it was the same thing other than the number.
Wolf Ranch?
I got, I got 120, the one I just called for was for 127-128, for Lake County Economic Development and the amended agenda.
agenda.
The actual resolution is 132 in the package. So we must have an error of the agenda.
It's 133?
So did I read the right one? You read the right one, if you read it in record, it's 132.
Okay, so 132 is correct? Same, for the same thing, Lake County?
Lake County.
Okay, great. Okay, we're good to go. Okay, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, it's an interlocal agreement with Lake County for the Wolf Branch Innovation District and the updated work order with a consultant. Dr. Levy was here earlier, of course, he had to head back out. But I would just state that we discussed this earlier. I have presented to you the request also to approve the work order. We have refined that work order as compared to the one I provided you back on May 16th. So this has very detailed information. It also gives you a timeline, lets the public see as well as the county see when we're going to attempt to go through some of these processes. Obviously, those dates could float a little bit, it's fluid. But we've also worked with the county, which is why you have the interlocal agreement, and they've agreed to these timelines. The interlocal agreement, out of good fortune, the county has agreed to the $50,000 as a two-year with a third-year option. And that's included in our total economic package in the process. And we would request that you approve the interlocal agreement as well as the proposed work order for the city manager's signature. Thank you.
Have a motion for approval?
I move approval of 2017-132 and any additions mentioned by our manager.
Second?
You have a second? Comments from council? Mr. Olson?
Thank you. Only that this is our number one strategic, relates to our number one strategic priority as this council, so it's certainly an appropriate and necessary thing that we do.
And I'll just add, and it was good to see what newspaper article today with Jeff Cole from the county manager, one of his top priority was economic development.
Yes, they were copied on the interlocal. Of course, they've been involved. Robert Chandler's been involved very heavily. So we're all very excited to see this proceed. You'll see quarterly updates from Dr. Levy. He will appear here the same day that he goes to the county and gives them a quarterly update. And we're going to obviously have some quarters that are very busy and others that we're waiting on information and so forth. But we will keep you apprised of that and as well on the website, we'll post those quarterly reports.
Any comments? Anybody from the public wish to address this issue? See none? Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Resolution Number 2017-140, declaration of state of emergency and utility relief. Ms. Colacraft, can we have the title read, please?
That's the additional package, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we're set. Okay, that's okay.
That's more...
It changes the agenda.
Okay, so we're good to go there? Okay, so we have the title read. You don't have it?
Here. I put here. I think misty, misty. Are they together? Yes. Okay. All right, now, got it. Sorry, this was all coming together quickly. I burned to see Resolution Number 2017-140, an emergency resolution of City Council of City of Mount Dora, Florida confirming declaration of a state of emergency and authorizing appropriate actions to be taken with respect to the conduct of city business providing for an effective date.
Mayor, would you like to read the proclamation rather than me?
Yes, I'm just gonna do that right now. And there's a proclamation also along with this and from the mayor. And this is, whereas the City of Mount Dora, Florida Code of Ordinances, Section 18, Mayor Duties Authorizes the Mayor to Take Necessary Action in Emergency Situations. These emergency powers of the mayor shall not extend beyond the next meeting of the City Council. And whereas the Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances authorizes certain emergency measures to be taken under emergency conditions, and whereas a state of emergency is hereby declared by proclamation to authorize such actions as may be necessary to manage such state of emergency, and whereas the issuance of emergency resolutions 2017-140, 2017-141, and 2017-142 shall be necessary to enable the proper control of and response to the emergency conditions certified above. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nick Jerome of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, do hereby proclaim and declare that an emergency exists within the City of Mount Dora and that all proper and lawful actions necessary to swiftly resolve the emergency and return the community to a condition of normalcy shall be taken.
Thank you, mayor. In Resolution 2017-140, as the city attorney read, this is the authorizing the appropriate actions to be taken with respect to the conduct of the city business in which the mayor will allow the EOC, which is manned by our incident commander, chief writer, myself as the city manager and public safety director, John O'Grady. We will be all at the EOC in the process of that. The next two resolutions are also as in support of that, if it's okay with you to proceed, mayor?
Yes.
Emergency Resolution Number 2017-141, an emergency resolution of the City Council of City of Mount Dora, Florida relating to emergency management confirming a declaration of state of emergency, authorizing emergency purchasing and procurement procedures, and suspending certain city code rules and regulations relating to purchasing and procurement. This resolution shall be valid for 30 days and automatically renewed every 30 days until further action by the City Council. Do you want me to read the next one as well?
Just one second, yes.
2142 as well?
Yes.
Good.
Emergency Resolution Number 2017-142, an emergency resolution of City Council of City of Mount Dora, Florida confirming a declaration of state of emergency and authorized setting of curfew and designating certain areas off limits providing for an effective date.
And Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, mayor. As mentioned, Resolution 2017-141 actually allows us to suspend our current procedures using our procurement process. And we propose to the mayor to add one whereas statement, if that's okay with him, that we would like to, at least for the time being, assign the city manager as the authority to run with the process. And if the council's okay with it, let the city attorney put the wording together that just really assigns, as we did in last year's proclamation, those duties as the mayor decides to push those onto the city manager during this process.
I move the adoption of the emergency resolution Number 2017-140, 140, 141, and 142, and to give authorization to the city attorney to make any corrections suggested by the city manager or additions.
As related to the allocation of authorities to the city manager.
Thank you. I'll add that, please.
Thank you.
Second.
Any comments?
In our copy we have, it's got some specific dates when it comes to the setting of curfew and things. Did that change or something? Because our copy reads different than what was read.
So we've been changing that, trying to match Lake County. So if you can read that into your acceptance of the resolution, that that could change right up until Lake County finalizes their curfew. We do want to match Lake County. So it's been changing as we go through the day, and if the city attorney can put that in there at your...
My amendment was intended to include that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my question is about the off-limits areas. Do we know where, I mean, I'm sure you know, but are these off-limits areas going to be posted so that the citizens are aware of where they're not supposed to be?
John O'Grady, Public Safety Director. What normally happens is, once the storm hits and we're at maybe a couple hours out of hitting 40 mile an hour winds, then Lake County will get together with the municipalities, the sheriff's office, the sheriff, and will say, "Curfew is from this time until the storm passes," and we usually give it a few hours after that. And then they'll come back and say, "Depending upon the damage, the last thing we want is people on the roads." So yes, they will say 4:41, they'll say, "Out after this time," because the last thing we need is people wandering around, touching live wires. It's for public safety.
Right. I just wanted to know, were there specific designated areas or are there areas that will be determined by the appropriate authority?
Just a fluid resolution as we find out the information.
Does the second agree with my amendment? With my...
Yes.
We're good to go there? Okay, anybody other than comments from council? See none? Anybody from the public wish to address this item? See none? Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Okay, so we finished on the first?
No, we're not. We have them asked.
I'm clear. And this is, and we apologize for this, but with everything that's been happening and there's been a lot of fluid stuff going on with the county, everything else these last few days, so we apologize for...
Oh, right.
Yeah, with the storm, apologize also with the storm. We just realized there were several things we needed to take care of in house key.
It's Irma that should apologize.
We'll just take her butt when she gets here. Maybe I'll... Just 140, 144.
144.
Well, yeah, 143 and 144, there are two. Oh, 144?
No.
That's fine.
What is 143? What's the...
Piggyback contract for debris hauling and disposal services?
They've got 144.
144.
They have some table. Would you done already? Oh, here's 143 here. Resolution, city piggyback contract for debris hauling.
Effectively the same.
No, that's the same one here. Okay.
No, they're different. They are different. There's a monitoring and a hauling, so...
So these are basically, we'll do, we'll do the, you have both up there?
I have both, yes.
Okay, so we'll read the titles of both. These are going to be combined also.
You can, you can combine them because they are, but just read them individually on title.
Okay, read them individually on title, please.
Resolution Number 2017-143, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida authorizing a piggyback contract for emergency debris hauling and disposal services with Crowder Golds Joint Venture, Inc., providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for savings provisions, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for effective date.
Next one, Lee, 2017-144.
Resolution Number 2017-144, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida authorizing a piggyback contract for emergency debris hauling and disposal services with Crowder Golds Joint Venture, Inc., providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for savings provisions, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for effective date.
Next one, Lee, 2017-144.
Resolution Number 2017-144, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida authorizing a piggyback contract for emergency debris monitoring services with Whit, LLC, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for savings provisions, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for effective date.
Ms. Hayes, you can come on, vote.
Sure. Thank you, mayor, council members. So 143 and 144, you have a piggyback with, for debris hauling and disposal as well as piggyback for monitoring. This is required practice. We talked about this a little bit last year. We did not have the finalized contracts last year in place for this year, so that's the reason we had to really scramble today to put these together. We did choose a piggyback this time. Going forward, this will be a bid that we will go out and put in place in the time here when we have no hurricanes and it's good for the next two years, three years, whatever it might be. These are based on customary charges at that point in time. It's a standard, I could always bring Mr. McKinney up if you have any questions. Obviously, this was a contract in which he was part of last year in Edgewater, but the procurement services were provided to you. They went through the process of putting out the bid, ranking them, and going through the full process. So it's a, it's a very valid piggyback process. And although the FEMA, when they look at our reimbursements, may give us a little bit of a hard time, but we at least went with a contract that's in place.
Have a motion for approval for 2017-143 and 144.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on the council? See none? Anybody from the public wish to address these two items? See none?
May I add one other thing there? Just for the public's sake, at least it's my view, these are very basic, necessary functions of city government in an emergency. All of these are that. And without this, there would be, in my view, increased danger, frustration, and a bunch of other adverse adjectives to describe what the city would have to face without the foresight of the council doing this and delegating to our mayor and our city manager the responsibility to deal with those emergencies. It's basic city government in an emergency.
It's good because last year's emergency, and which wasn't too bad last year, but we still had a lot of debris removal, things like that that we had to do. We didn't have this resolution last year to go in advance, and so it's nice having it in advance and then during the course of the year, if you're going to go out on bid, so we'll have it in, we'll have it ready to go for the following year. So administration last year had to deal with that, I think, on an emergency basis at that point. And instead of having the resolution in place ahead of time, so it's good we're doing, having some, being proactive with this thing.
We had the public, but go ahead, come on, it's just...
Mike Masterson, 7887 Crosswalks Way. I won't even sit on my stick. I asked a question, I had a question recently. In a, if I have an old tree on my house on, say, Fifth Avenue, and it falls on the street, is it my responsibility to pick up the tree and have it hauled away? Or does the city come and pick it up because I'm obstructing traffic? The core of my question is this. Do we give people who don't maintain their trees a freebie by allowing them to have old trees, just leave them alone? When it falls, somebody will take care of it for me? As opposed to being proactive? Can you help me with that? As a, since you're talking about this emergencies, it's kind of in the same thing.
Sure.
I think it's wrong.
I think so. I think I'll ask Mr. Peters to come up and speak in reference to what he does at his side. This is for the, for the storm. And I realize it could still apply, but I think the practice of what we go through as far as on a day-to-day is really what you're asking for.
Appreciate your preparedness.
There's going to be a little difference between a storm and normal, but I think it might relay somebody's fears about it, that if they do have a tree, what to do, maybe you can talk about that. It's great.
John Peters, Public Works Director. I've had, unfortunately, a lot of experience with dealing with debris removal due to hurricane and tropical storms, as I moved Florida back in 1994. The FEMA generally did not pay to remove trees in the roadways within private subdivisions.
I'm not aware of that. I'm talking about, yes, if an old tree fell down, who picked it up and whose fault? Be clear.
I'm not aware that we did. Generally, we do not do private streets unless it is impeding public safety.
But it's a public street. He's referring to a public street.
To a public street.
In the public general. If a tree is within the right of way to begin with, and it's our tree, we will remove it. If a tree falls into the roadway, we will remove it out of the roadway to allow public safety to get by. So if a private tree falls into the road, we typically will cut it and put it back on the person's property for them to deal with.
Which is your question correct?
Yes. In broad terms, but what I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, do we reward people for not having, then, with stewards of their properties, by allowing them to get away with that?
We have to to maintain safety, public safety.
Okay. Now, my question would be just real quick, do we bill the homeowner for you coming out and removing the tree?
No, sir, we do not, because we put the emphasis on public safety.
There you go.
That's the main thing that we're concerned with at that point.
Okay. Ms. Olson? Just a comment, if I might, thank you, Mayor. Going to the country called Mount Door, where I live, our communities, this is an example, spent ten thousand dollars to do what we call hurricane and cutting of trees, and I believe, and that was all funded by our homeowners, because it's our private property, albeit public streets, and I believe that will pay significant dividends in the storm, because when you air off those trees, you have less chance of blocking roadways, and that's important for everything. So, our view is, is that if it is on the homeowner's private property, just as Mr. Peters indicated, the homeowner's responsible for that tree, because it's his or her property, and, but if, and there are some, as certainly Mr. Peters knows very, very well, that are on city property, and the city is fully responsible for those, including the sidewalks. So, it's, I think it's, it seems like an appropriate and, sorry to say, very logical explanation of that issue.
I will also say just one other thing, and I use one example that we have in town, we had a tree company that came out and cut a tree, they left the remnants of the tree and did not remove it entirely. We could cite the owner, but again, the fairness in that, when the owner paid for the tree to be removed, to be taken down and removed, we're having to look at that, but what we can do is, we can not allow that tree company any more permits to cut the tree, so that therefore they do not do that. So, we are being as proactive as we can with these issues, once we're notified of them.
Okay, that was, I will give back your, you want any other comments from council? Ready to go? Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. And this is the final reading of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero nine, the Purple Heart Right Of Way Vacating, and Miss Conkroff, do we have that, if it was read, by title?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mount Door, Florida, approving the vacation of a portion of the Purple Heart Lane right of way between Crestview Drive and Hilltop Drive, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for conflict severability, providing for correction of scrutiny errors, conflict severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Yes, Mayor, this is the final reading, so we've had quite a bit of discussion on the Purple Heart Lane right of way, and are one of our last meetings, I've had a couple citizens call and ask questions, we've handled those calls and discussed to them, discussed with them, the process by which we'll go through, and city staff recommend approval.
You have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any comments from council? See none, Mr. Sayed?
I have two comments or questions. Number one is, I know that there was said that there would be significant cost to the city, you know, had we kept these properties, and then I just want to make sure that, whatever those things that have to happen for drainage, that those new property owners, you know, are aware of any obligations that they might have, because it's gonna be theirs, you know.
Again, we will continue to work with those property owners, I think we have up to now, so in all good faith, John has worked with each one of them, I believe there are four, if I'm not mistaken, based on our last conversation, if they come to us asking for questions, we'll definitely provide them assistance.
And then the other thing is, the adjoining, or the street over, the other part of Purple Heart, I know you're working on, and thank you for working on that part of, you know, that part that might someday be a part.
Right. The property across from that's in a very similar situation, we have allowed the folks that are living there to put certain impediments, which we may look at a bench or something in the future.
Opportunity for the public to address this issue, and Ms. Slavy's coming up, has been patiently waiting for three hours to have a call.
I'm Shannon Henchy, I live at fourteen thirty-eight Crestview, I'm one of the four property owners that's adjacent to this property. I just wanted to say that we have owned the property about ten years, when we bought it, our driveway was on this right of way, and we approached the city then about purchasing it, and we were turned down. So, we really appreciate that you all are considering this issue now, and also that we're more than willing to take on the, any liability the property might have, and to add to the city's tax base, and thank you.
Thank you. Back to council, and with an affirmative vote tonight, you will be owning that property, the city's vacating, and you will have the liability, and you will have everything you desire, so at this point. So, is there any other comment from council? See none? Ms. Johnson, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Okay. Discussion, and Mayor, city manager, report anything, do you have?
Mayor, thank you, council members, I believe I've mentioned earlier about the, obviously, when we are opening our EOC and so forth, I did understand from Mr. Peters earlier, please look at the TV when you get home, I understand the storm has strengthened again even more so, so possibly moved a little bit, yes, west, or whatever it might be. Again, that just puts us in the possible zone area, we will activate accordingly, I will send emails out to you to keep you informed, from the public, please watch the Facebook website, I know you can get a lot of information from the TV, as long as it's up and you have service, but you can also reach out to the city, and we'll post anything that we might have. If there's a water break, a boil water, we'll post information, our code red will also be in play, and will also be active, so we'll use that as we need to, so, Ms. Ben.
Of course, that assumes that everybody has internet access, if they can...
This is true. Well, the advantage for Facebook and, yeah, Facebook and Twitter, your phones will typically work during this process, so...
As long as they're charged.
Please charge, please make sure you've taken care of your home, and your water, and your pets, and all the things that you need. The shelters are open, they can take in pets, I understand all of our Lake County shelters are pet friendly, again, you know, do not wait to the last minute to try to leave your home, especially when forty mile winds are just as dangerous for cars, obviously, as for an emergency vehicle, and other than that, I don't know that I have anything else tonight, thank you.
Word for me?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, oh, thank you, John, yes, our event for Sunday for at Maloo's was closed, I asked him up earlier to tell me, and then I was gonna forget, they did cancel the event temporarily, I'm not sure what they'll come back in and ask for in the future, but the party at, I'm not sure it's called a party, it's called a concert, so I'll properly say it, a concert at Maloo's, where this Sunday attempt has been canceled, so...
Thank you. Okay, it's my pleasure to reappoint Ms. Lori Tillot, and to the Mount Door Community Trust, this Distribution Committee, and you're going to accept that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and all a favor?
Aye.
Very great, thank you. You are hereby appointed. Already put your name, already gave your name, so you better be. Okay, city attorney, report?
Nothing, really. I did see that Comcast is opening up a lot of hotspots, so even if we lose power, a lot of the internet will still be available. Other than that, just check it out.
Okay, we're good to go there, and go down to any other, Ms. Hope, anything you would like to share?
Long evening, so I'll keep it short, I just will say that we haven't met since the Friends of the Library did their trivia night, we sold out, we had a fabulous night, and they made over forty-five hundred dollars, which they'll be working with the library, along with some other money we have on our budget, to look at how we can support them for the different items that they need.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, council, this, just personal comment, and a thank you to the our chief grinder, our fire chief, and his deputy chief, they helped me locate one of the sandbank sites, I didn't, I missed somehow, I saw it on the web, but I had a difficult time located it, I think, for some reason, and so I appreciate that extra service to do that. Also want to thank all those into whose hands we'll be putting our safety for the next few days, our chief grinder and firefighters that are there, Chief O'Grady and his officers, John Peters that will be helping, and his crew, our manager, our mayor, and those that will be sharing the responsibility to keep us all safe, and all those who participate, Charles in the electric end, and everybody else that participates in that, we have, in my view, the best, and so I think we're all as safe as we can be, and I feel very comfortable with that, thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, evidently it didn't make it to the agenda tonight, the...
No, next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. All right, very briefly, like I said there, it was late, just as you used to say on Hill Street Blues, let's be safe out there this weekend, and especially our public safety forces, please be careful. And as a participant for the first time in the Donley House Run, maybe the last, because I don't think I could look through it again, it was a lot of fun, I recommend it, for all of you to try it one time, and big kudos to the Donley House people, they all put it together, Denny Wood, and all the volunteers out there, it just was very enjoyable, it was first class.
You looked at John coming past.
I needed oxygen and a beer.
Next year, I'll make sure I have some at my...
You said previously, John, you're as old as dirt, I think you said, what does that make me? I think I'm older than you are.
You'd be in the next category up, they broke them down very nicely at the race.
Mr. Slavy?
Thank you, I just have a couple ideas here today. First off, to all working hard to take care of us, thank you, but additionally, to anyone who's listening, our first job is not to be somebody to be needing, to be taken care of, so don't be a knucklehead, don't get out there in your vehicle, driving around, because, you know, there's a little pause, because that's how hurricanes work, and go check out stuff, you know, live wires don't tell you...